And reports monthly on progress and concerns. If anybody in the community has a concern or says something, they let us know. The CEO at Carolina Pines let me know though that he says, "They aren't pulling all the way up to our ER." And I said, "Well, I'm glad you told me that. I didn't realize that." So, we took care of that and that's being managed too. So, we're aiming to please and we're looking forward at growing more in the future because this is just not a service for few as a service for all.
So, I'll tell you, Shan- is Shan- we had the opportunity to go to Rock Hill and see their new transit system.
Right.
Which is phenomenal. And it's Rock Hill. It's a whole lot more people times 100 than we have here. But it gives me hope about where we're going. It's an all-electric bus system that they got through a federal grant. But the cool thing about it is because of the app that they were able to develop with it, even though it's web-based, still affords a lot of people the opportunity to track the arrival and departure and know that what routes run on time. And when you start to get that level of feedback, then more people are out to use the system because now I don't have to worry about, "Am I gonna be late to work?" right at the water park?
Right.
And I think that there's a lot of potential where you guys have started us. And correct me if I'm wrong, this was a side project for you. You got a whole nother job at Caris South and this is not it?
This is not my job.
You just took this on because you saw that something needed to happen. I think that's pretty admirable.
Thank you. And it's been a good collaboration to everybody.
Sure, sir.
It's made it successful.
But it takes one person to spearhead it.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And Don's gonna tell you we have an app too.
Oh, wonderful. I mean, I'm taking all I can do.
No, this is good though. This is what we need to hear. And when people do go to other towns and cities, like bringing information back to us, because a lot of times we might not know.
Yeah.
I just love the way he says "we" with everything. And really, that's what sort of Joe was, Caris South employee, but you wouldn't know that. You would know that he wasn't a PDRT employee. So, thank you for all that you've done. We have him direct back in here from Caris South as well. So, I'm not sure how to navigate this, but I'm Don Strick, I'm the M Director of PDRTA, and thank you all for having us again. And I am excited. You know, we're here most of the time whenever I'm presenting in four cities or counties, I'm coming back asking for more money. We may do that, but we're not there yet. So, I wanted to share kind of where we were and just how impressed I am with where we're headed. And I think, you know, you'll be able to see some of the same stuff that we're talking about. Would you like a paper copy or?
No, no, this is good. Very good.
Alright, so, I'll just run through it with you. So, basically, for those who are not aware, our entire fleet is ADA accessible. So, every bus that we offer, we can take wheelchairs and walk. We have a lot of senior citizens that use the bus, as Joe mentioned earlier. All the drivers are trained, certified first aid CPR, defensive driving. They do a really good job with, you know, preventing accidents. They're scanning when they're coming to red lights, making sure that if someone knows that they're gonna run the red light, they slow down. And that's important things to do. Every bus that we have now have bike racks in front of them. So, you have a lot of folks in South Parcel that are using bikes. They're actually putting a bike in front of the bus. If you ever see it coming around Caris South or Walmart, a lot of companies have a bike in front of them. So, they're actually using that service. Every bus that we offer now has, it has five to eight surveillance cameras. Those are exterior and interior. They're audio and video. So, it helps with anybody thinking about doing anything crime-related, violent or whatever because they can see that they're being recorded. So, it really makes a big difference there. The mayor mentioned the app and Rock Hill. Fortunately, the state came together and provided a state grant to help many RTAs come up with this app. And it's called Synchronatics. PDRTA is on board. I have it on my phone now. Many of the pastors, Joe may have it, that are using the system, they live track every bus in our fleet. So, if I go on right now, we'll talk about it in a second, I can actually click the heart bus, show you. It's not running right now. Maybe it should be, but it would show us exactly where that is and we can talk about that. And the other thing is we manage our entire maintenance. We have a maintenance team that pretty much covers everything and they're good at what they do. This is our app. Basically, if you have an Android or an Apple phone, you can actually go on, you just type in "PDRTA," you're able to pull it up. You can see exactly where the bus is the entire day. And that's for every bus in our system. Every vehicle we operate has that capability. The other thing with the app, we have a tablet on board now for drivers. They're not communicating. They're not having to use Bluetooth or cell phones. They're actually communicating through the tablet. This makes it for a much hands-free, safer environment.
So, are all of your routes settled now for the most part? Or no?
When you say "all," I mean in the city of Parcel?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we're...
I mean, all the stops rather, I should say, not maybe the routes.
We have a really, we've gone before this city and we've sent in kind of what we were looking at as far as locations.
Okay.
That would, we're gonna get to that, but that would actually, it's been approved as far as I know. We're able to start that process at some point. But, you know, we know pretty much where the service is needed. Not gonna say it doesn't need to be tweaked down the road.
Sure.
There will be other services that will have to come with what we're doing and it's more of an ADA complimentary fare transit service. So, you may have someone that lives within three-quarters of a mile of the heart route, but they may live on a dirt road, they may have a wheelchair, they may be on a walker and they can't get to the bus. We have another service and we haven't done it yet, but we have to be able to provide that service. They call us the day ahead of time. We'll be there the next day to pick them up and take them to their appointments.
So, you can deviate from the route?
You can. To fix route right now, if we have those kind of calls, we all, we would deviate. But, when you're trying to run a schedule and stay on track, you have, whenever that volume continues to increase, we're gonna have to bring in another set of buses to be able to handle that.
At one point at an early meeting I went to, there was some talk about removing the public schools on regular stops of routes for parent conferences and things like that. Any reconsideration of that?
We are covering, we did go by some of the schools. It's not all of them. You know, that is something we can certainly look at down the road. Right now, it's kind of tailored to where, based on public care, any feedback and everything we receive, where the need was.
Gotcha.
So, that's something we can certainly look further into.
Is there one bus that operates the route?
Yes, there is. So, right now, we have two buses pretty much sitting around the time. We have a spare bus and then the active bus. And it runs eight to 12, one to five every day. We're getting ready to add two additional hours of service in the new year because of that private donation that Joe mentioned a few minutes ago. We'll be able to run until 7:00 p.m.
How do we, so I'm looking at this, I haven't seen the transit schedule, but I noticed that nothing is in downtown. How do we change that? How do we make it an area that you all can utilize to bring people to the city center? I get coker, but yeah.
Yeah, right now, we're coming up...
Did I miss that? Where's the...
We're coming up Carolina all the way to Fork Street. So, you're coming to that point. And then you're coming Carolina heading the other direction all the way to Fifth Street. So, the only place you're not downtown really is between Fourth and Fifth, right in front of Y and C about here.
In front of Fourth and Fifth. Where am I missing the police department?
That's where they don't ask for a sign at the police department or do that sign unless...
Yeah, I mean, there's some places like Design View Board, whether it's a historic district or whatnot, but, you know, we're coming both sides of downtown. We're just not coming from here over to Fork Street on Carolina. They were going up Fifth to North Park School.
Right, traveling. I guess I'm asking for a stop in the middle of downtown somewhere. Like, how do we bring people to City Hall to pay bills, to downtown for events?
We would drop them off right on the side of City Hall.
But you just won't pick them up there?
Well, because of your own, on the street parking there, it's difficult to really put a bus stop sign in.
So, if we can find a safe space...
That would be ideal.
Awesome, okay. I'm just looking for a path forward. I mean, you know, and I'm not saying that downtown is everything, but I do know that this is the center of government and the ability to bring people for things like that, I don't know, Christmas prayer, whatever.
Paying the bills.
It's worth looking into. And that's on us because we have to find a safe space that's not gonna cause you guys, you know, a headache trying to figure out.
It is tough. We have a lot of requests to get off right over on Fifth, on the side of this property and it's tough to make that stop. A lot of times we have to go up, you know, past that theater a little bit further and then they walk.
That's a shame. And it's not your fault, but yeah, we don't need 50 mile an hour vehicles traveling through the center of our city because of that exact same reason. It's not safe for people to, it's not safe to cross the street down there, much less get all headway going with a bus. So, we'll work on that. I know that Fifth Street's a major challenge, but maybe Carolina, there's some options. Cool. Alright.
So, that is, what we're looking at was a picture. She's already on the map. That was the schedule and she's on the map now. So, you'll see that, you know, it's a pretty sprawl. I think it's 17 or 18 miles is what the route is from start to finish. We do go all the way out to vocational rehab. We have a few folks out there, Carolina Pines Hospital, and we've come on back down to Carolina, back into town. But you'll see that it's just basically one block gap that I would love to be able to bring, bring a bus stop closer in.
So, there's one bus running?
There's one, currently one bus running. It's an hour headway.
So, the next step, I guess, logistically speaking, is there two buses running, two loops that interconnect somehow or how does that?
So, there's a lot of ways to look at that. We're running hour headways right now. You can, usually the quickest way to accommodate, provide more service would be add another operator and another bus.
Yeah.
And that becomes 30-minute frequency. You can run it in opposite directions. You can do a lot of different things.
I got you.
So that you're not having to wait that hour.
And not having to stand out in the rain waiting on the second bus and...
Passengers right now, they can't go buy ice cream at the grocery store and get home.
Ah, see, that's practical. You are smart.
Every now and then. So, it, I mean, it's just something to think about. They kill. I mean, it's just the nature of the beast, but it is convenient for a lot of folks. If you don't have a ride and you're trying to get to Caris South, Carolina Pines, or the dialysis or wherever you're trying to get to, it just makes sense.
Then you, sorry.
I have a neighbor who, she told me she was gonna take her daughter on the bus to take us to the Christmas lights. So, it's kind of too casual as well. What is, what's the cost to operate for a year with one bus and how does that change if it's two?
So, this service itself, if you look at the overall cost for an entire year, right now, we're running six days a week. It is roughly $150,000 a year. We need about $56,000 on the local level. This is before we're adding service to make this happen. That's the number we came up to.
The rest is federal?
67, 65 to 67% is federal. We get a small portion from the state and everything else has to be local. And the mod, see, we're changing, PDRTA, we're changing the mission and vision. We're doing more of, we're going to people that actually earn benefit from the service and trying to bring more stakeholders to the table so that not one entity is trying to cover everything.
Yeah.
Like Joe said earlier, if we can get 10 to 15 coming to the table with $3,000 to $5,000, you're where you need to be to be able to sustain.
So, instead of hitting up, you know, the people with deeper pockets, the bigger corporations, now you're trying to spread it and double the people participating.
And those people see the benefit.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we certainly have to have help. If we want to grow it, there's things that we can do. We still need federal money on the table every year because we don't have enough left for support. There's a lot of things. We get a lot of phone calls from the Darlington area wanting to come this way.
Yeah.
And that's something that at one point we ran service for, primarily it was tech students that were going back and forth, but there's, you know, a lot of different possibilities there.
So, Don, if you scale it as another $150,000, add that second bus and you're talking $300,000?
Um, no, sir. Not exactly because there is overhead and indirect expenses built into that. I would say it's probably 60% of the cost, maybe 65%. So, you wouldn't need another 56. You may need 35 to 40 to be able to do the same thing again. The state has actually helped us with some assets as far as being able to have buses. I hope that that continues in the future. Marlborough County is another service that Joe mentioned earlier. We're having about 3,000 trips. It's a lot. It's more service than Harpsville.
Yeah.
But it shows us that it works and that that same, the same need, there's more demand response and we're bringing in some more rural areas into Benningsville. And we're bringing them from Plow and McCall and Blenheim. So, you might have folks, you know, there's a lot of areas outside of the city of Parcel that wants to come to Harpsville.
Yeah.
And then you may be able to go out, you know, pass on Parcel and, you know, towards other areas to bring them in to this area.
The city of Kellytown.
Yeah, yeah, well, we're going to vocational rehab, so we're pretty close there. But, um, yeah.
I'll have to talk with the mayor of Kellytown and see what he thinks about that.
You should do.
Do you still have the trolleys?
We do. Still have two trolleys.
We'd like to buy one.
Buy one.
Yeah, we need one for the water parks. We can run them to the hotels every 15 minutes to pick up kids.
So, you don't want to use federal funds, do you?
No, no, I just, I just need one.
No, I'm saying, you're gonna have an expense associated with that. Unless you draw a...
I don't do well with the expense part apparently. It's just the whole like, "Wow, wouldn't it be cool to have a trolley going to the water park?"
We can run that service for you. We just have to come up with the local match.
A girl who was a planner who's in grad school came here and she said, "You know what you guys need? You need, you need one of the trolleys, but you need to split it with a ski, a ski company, you know, because you need it during the summer and they need it during the winter." This, you could share the costs. I was like, "That's brilliant."
That's a good one.
Yeah, so I know where you can take the trolley in the winter. Alright, gentlemen, thank you.
I want to add one comment. One of the members at Second Baptist Church, Mrs. Ada Miller, we have out on Ninth Street. And she loves PDRTA. She has moved the way out of New, but the fact that this is covering transportation to the hospital, to Caris South, to drugstores, Walmart and that thing, it is such a tremendous help to people without transportation. It costs you probably about $10 to have to go to the doctor's office of Carolina Pines and back home.
Yeah, I've heard horror stories about, about that.
Yeah, it did cost enforcement to know that these people can get to their doctor's appointments and get back home, you know, without having to go through so many hurdles and pay that price that's so expensive for them is truly, truly a blessing.
You had mentioned earlier about from Parcel to Darlington. That's on our next agenda to try to be creative and coming up with a way for that. Because if they go from Parcel to Darlington, there's a connection from Darlington to Harpsville. And so, we're, maybe they can build Darlington, Harpsville, and take it on us.
So, 40 grand for another, another route, another bus on the same route. 40-ish. That's not bad.
For a year.
Yeah. It's hummed out of my mind.
What would be the, so you got 1,300. I see the highest 1424. What would be the maximum capacity we could transport in a week or a month or a day or what kind of is it?
So, right now on this service that we're operating, there's times where it's a, now it's a 14 passenger, we have a 14 passenger and a 22 passenger. 14 gets about a dollar more per gallon. So, we run that a mile more per gallon. So, it'll run a little bit more, but our, on average right now, we're about eight to nine trips per hour. So, every time I make that circle around Harpsville, we're picking up eight or nine people. So, 20, whatever year it was in the past, that number was three to four. So, we're way more than double where we were in the past. If, if it continues to grow, we're gonna exceed the buses that we have over here. Adding, you know, either larger buses or having more frequency and additional buses can offset that of course. But, we're not, we're not there yet to be concerned about taking every single bus, but if it continues, if we get to 1,700, 1,800 on average, we won't be able to use that 14 passenger anymore in the service that we're currently running. They'll be standing room only on that bus.
And signage is forthcoming?
Yes, sir. And here, if we talk about, there's a ton of stops in there and there's the ridership statistics, I know it's getting late. But, yes, sir, we're working on that. In fact, we're not working on it. The bus stops are in. All of our, it was, I think it was right at $12,000. 80% of that is paid for on the federal side, but all of our bus stops, schedule box inserts, everything is here and we should be ready to start taking care of those first of the year.
Wonderful. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Alright, manager's update. Madam manager.
I'm...
Okay. Items on the consent agenda will be received without objection. They stand approved. Moving into new business, the biggest election of the night, politically speaking. Resolution 12-19-01, a resolution for the election of the mayor pro tempore. Pro tempore. Pro tempore. Is there such a motion?
We are making a motion that says 12-19-01.
I believe the motion requires a nomination.
I would like to nominate Councilman Andrew.
There's a motion for the, are you sure? Okay.
Second.
Let's drag this all the way to here. He's sweating bullets over here. How many did you get elected by? 70? You're gonna struggle with seven, I tell you. Alright, and there's a second. Is there any discussion? Been hearing none, all in favor. Signify by saying a. Vernice, would you like to weigh in on this?
No.
Opposed by nay. Let the record reflect that council has voted unanimously for the hump-deep term to reelect the mayor pro tempore. Congratulations, sir. It is an honor to serve beside you.
Thank you.
Alright, item seven on the agenda is resolution 12-19-02, resolution for approval of purchase of a utility camera trailer. Is there such a motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. Item eight on our agenda is resolution 12-19-03, a resolution for approval to apply for the South Carolina Department of Parks, Recreation and Tourism, also known as SCPRT, to undiscovered, for undiscovered South Carolina grant. Is there a motion to adopt?
Mayor, make a motion to adopt resolution 12-03.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Sir.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. Item nine on the agenda is resolution 12-19-04, a resolution for approval and authorization for the acceptance of ownership of Tax Map Parcel 056-10-04-014 located at the corner of Marbury Avenue and Seventh Street from the Harpsville Oil Mill to the city of Harpsville, South Carolina and other matters pertaining, other matters related thereto.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we pass resolution 12-19-04.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't catch who the second was from again. Could you restate the second, please?
I see.
Let the record reflect officially that our freshman member of council has entered on to the record in his first act as a council member.
I see my man.
It took you longer than it took Bob to get on the record, so you've got some catching to do. Congratulations, sir. Alright, there is a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, so this will give the city ownership and will not re-sign.
A different issue?
Yes.
Okay. This is the one across the street from the rescue squad. It's a wooded property that they would like to dispose to a spring.
I think it's next to Adeline's sister's house.
Yeah.
Is that right? Yeah. You familiar now? We're good? Okay. Anything further?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor. Signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. Item 10 on our agenda is first reading of ordinance 4378. The manager will publish.
Authorizing and ratifying the assignment of zoning classification for Tax Map members 0560001157 consisting of 12 acres, 0560001158 consisting of 6.28 acres, 0560001159 consisting of 31.85 acres located behind the current Walmart property and other matters relating thereto.
Have you heard the reading of, the first reading by time of presentation of the manager on ordinance 4378? At this time, the chair will entertain a motion for, to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt ordinance 4378. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, we are close to the Southern Street ownership problem. I know they own the street, but...
I would defer to staff for that answer.
So, I have a proposal saying it would require council approval. And I checked in with him twice and he says that he's speaking with engineers still on deciding what we're gonna do. Because I've asked for improvements to the street before we'd be willing to accept it. So, I don't have an answer yet, but we're still in email communication and all that. This zoning is assigning what you counsel previously gave it zoning. We went back to Lawrence. He wants us to do it a different way, so that's why we're coming back with one council.
Two things. I'll take them up in the next, after we vote. Anything further? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. I apologize, I broke protocol. I did not ask you to put your name and address on the record. So, if you could please see the clerk before, before you leave, Joe.
Yes.
I apologize for that. Second is, we're having a point of order discussion over here. It's under new business, it's first reading. Should item B not be approval of first reading?
Not final?
Yeah. Is that right?
Time though.
I caught that. You guys sort of weren't paying attention.
Under, TMB. TMB.
Because it's new business first reading.
And same under 11.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Good job.
So, we know that we're not approving it. It's not your fault.
It is.
I blame the city manager. I blame the city.
I did tell her it's mine.
And then I blame Trey. She's supposed to read this stuff, Trey. Alright. Alright, so moving on, item 11 is first reading of ordinance 4379. The manager will publish.
Ordinance authorizing the city of Hartsville to grant and authorize a right of first refusal to Hartsville Parking, Beautification and Business Improvement Commission and other matters related thereto.
Okay, you per the reading by title and presentation of ordinance forty-three seventy-nine. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a amendment. Sir, make this ordinance term of thirty years. Chair, is a motion to amend ordinance forty-three seventy-nine. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? I'll defer to the...
Per their request, we are purchasing this property with parking beautification. The city will actually own it. But if we go to sell it or anything, they ask for thirty years. They will not sign it and split the cost with us unless we give it to them for a thirty-year term.
What's the driving behind the thirty years versus what we're telling you we know?
Well, let's back up one second. When you say give it to them, that is that we, we will offer them first right of refusal and pay them the sale, pay them back their money.
They'll have thirty years to exercise that.
Okay.
There has to be, they wanted it open-ended, but a contract requires an ending date. So it's really just an artificial date anyway that we're setting. And Lawrence has suggested twenty. He doesn't have an issue with going to thirty.